Yeah.
States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we got the meeting called to order. We did the pledge. Yeah. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the meetings on August 12th.
Thank you, sir.
Within our package, Traders Report, and I got a few things I'd like to bring up about accounts payable. Uh, I like it coming in our format to us on our phones, iPad, whatever you want to use. But, uh, we're four weeks into this, guys, ladies, and we're still getting visa bills with late charges. I mean, I, I'm not going to condemn any department, uh, but, you know, after four weeks, we should be on top of who we owe and for what. There should not be any late fees. And then another part of it, as you read through some of them, they're getting, we're getting stuck with sales tax. According to KD, there's a form that you have to send to your vendor explaining where, what we are, how it works, uh, and then they're supposed to eliminate the sales tax. So that's a couple of things, you know, that you need to get on top of. Folks, folks know this, but why they're bringing these bills in late, I don't know.
There's no reason for it.
That's my motion and explanation.
I got a motion.
You have a motion. And a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Um, so I can add some insight to what Richard brought up. So, um, in the last accounts payable, we had three invoices that were late, had late fees assessed or were given with, on the due date and a late fee was going, going to be assessed. Um, I can't speak to what happened before I took over accounts payable at the beginning of July. Um, I can just say that when they were being done before, everything was kind of lump summed. I started going in and line iteming, line iteming everything. So you can kind of see
Very nice.
what those charges are being included. So that's including the sales tax reference, any fees and late charges. So it's kind of being a little bit more transparent on that. So we've had three incidences of known late fees being assessed or going to be assessed because bills were late. But in total, I've noticed about 12 claims across three different departments that had been coming after or on a due date. So they were going to be paid and most likely a late fee being assessed. I've reached out to all the department heads to look into upcoming invoices to make sure that if they are paying attention to due dates, giving them a timetable, how to get those into the office to avoid any late fees. I've also reached out to them, asking that they be the ones reaching out to those department or those vendors to try to see if we can get those late fees waived. I've done the same with sales tax. So when it comes to the sales tax one, we've had about 12 occurrences across six different departments with sales tax. And that includes 10 different vendors. Um, but if we lump sum them, a lot of those were on visas where they're paying for the visas, they're going to a store and paying sales tax direct at that location, not like buying, excuse me, buying something online. So again, I've reached out to those department heads and I've asked them to reach out to those vendors, see if they can get those sales tax waived as we are exempt. I've given them the form they need to fill out. I've also kind of explained the process of what they do. They're supposed to be going in store to make these purchases. I've also asked on some of these that these are bills that we can be paying not on a visa and direct vendors. And I've asked them to set up direct billing with these vendors as well. So we can kind of cut down some of our useless visas.
Do you need to get feedback from that?
Yes. Um, so a lot of those emails actually went out this week. So we'll kind of keep an eye on them over the next couple of weeks. I'll keep you guys involved as well as we do that. The other thing I've noticed is we've had five occurrences of fees. So we had a visa over the limit fee with a department. We've also had a couple of paper bill fees. So I've reached out to that department head as well, seeing if we can get those waived as we're government entity. We can't be paying things online. We need paper bills here in office. So we'll see how that goes as well.
Good. Keep on it.
Thank you, Katie.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Some queries. There's no need for that. Not paying those once a week.
Yeah, especially we've been doing it for a month.
Yeah.
People should be caught up.
No, that's a... Sir, excuse me.
Yeah.
Uh, Amber, you said we have no liquor licenses? All right. And next thing, public comment. Anybody got any public comment?
Oh, of course. Just a real quick one. And it's kind of a reiteration of something we talked about a month or so ago. I see a small item on the agenda coming up about painting. We talked about carpet in an office a month ago. Um, just because it's in the budget and some comment was it's been 10 years. I don't know that those are valid reasons to paint and put wallpaper up. Just want to make sure that it's a valid use of the taxpayer money. Most of my house hasn't been painted in 10 years and it still looks okay. So just because it's been 10 years is not a reason in my mind.
Thank you.
Might get sued though.
I, I will. I hadn't come to say anything, but.
Are you on the agenda or?
I know, I'm not.
Okay. This would be your time to say something if you want to say something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, you got my emails, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, I've won at PAB, District Court upheld PAB hearing, uh, have determination. The assessor has yet to correct my classification. So I decided to let you know that and I sent her another email this morning, copied you guys on it. And, uh, we'll see what happens, but she's been so ordered to correct my classification by the fourth district court.
We'll definitely look into that. Thank you, Sudeep.
Yep.
If I can make a comment, um, this is in regards to the upcoming amendment notice that will be made and the, the public meeting that will have to be held in the last few weeks, there's been.
Sorry, budget amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There's been, um, hopefully I've understood comments made as we've approved bills or improved salary increases that there'll be no increase to budget. We'll find it, you know, in the budget. And I think that it would be who, um, the board of supervisors to ensure that when this presentation of the budget amendment occurs, that there's some transparency and communication as to how this occurs. Um, and most people's budgets in, in, at home, you know, they know how to translate that things, you know, come up. And that's understandable that it happens at a government level as well. Uh, but, uh, I am concerned that there could be a translation, and I know this is how I'm translating it and is probably erroneously, that there's this slush fund that's out there that helps when things, you know, occur. And so if that's not the case, um, the way to, I guess, combat against that is to communicate and provide transparency that if, um, something, as the decision's been made and taxpayer money's being used in a manner that wasn't originally budgeted and disclosed as such, that there is an ample disclosure that's being made so that the public understands what that is. I understand that, um, any entity has to have a liquidity policy and a policy that allows for working funds to be made available. Um, I haven't had a chance to reach out to get an access to that policy, but Amber was kind enough to meet with me last week and filled in a lot of blanks. And as I've always disclosed, one question and answer usually leads to three other questions. And so those will be forthcoming, um, to you gentlemen. Uh, but the amendment, uh, note will go out at some point. I'm assuming it has to be published and the meeting isn't really that far away. And so I would appreciate an effort being made to at least just discuss providing the community a way to understand how this money is being managed on their behalf.
True. For, for the record, there is no line item. It's a slush fund though.
And, and there, and there never is. It always is.
Right, right.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
What are they doing? We're doing the budget amendments because I'm paying off a loan early and I need to show that in my budget so we can do it. Sure. That way, yeah. So that's one of, that's the driving reason to get that.
You will explain that. There'll be, there'll be an explanation.
I'll do a good narrative.
And that, yeah, and that makes total sense because if, if the county is in a negative spread position from a debt, then obviously the taxpayers would want that debt repaid.
Yes.
But if we're not in a negative spread and we're making money and we're repaying it, they wouldn't be as excited about that. So it's, you know, that would be important, I think, for people to know.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Supervisor updates. Uh, I had a juvenile detention, uh, meeting last week and I, uh, spent two days at the state fair with my wife, which was awesome.
Did you get to go with the line?
No.
There you go. I had a meeting last week with Mark Norman. We talked briefly about GRC and a few other things. And then yesterday had a meeting with Angie Remington, who's the executive director of Golden Hills. We talked about, uh, Golden Hills' needs to start fundraising. Since they are a nonprofit, they need to start fundraising because there's a lapse of, uh, grants from state and federal governments. So they need to find some donors to be able to continue business. So working on that. That's all I have.
We had a four county meeting last week and, uh,
Four county meeting, yeah.
Page County, uh, that was the pizza steakhouse restaurant, which is, has excellent food, let me tell you. Uh, get the corinda. Uh, it was good to see. There's a couple of us, uh, that's still on the board. It's been there for over 20 years. Uh, one lady went from an auditor to supervisor and she says, I'm still got tossed up in the air. Which one's worse? But no, it was, it was good to talk over some things, listen to people's problems and things that went on. Uh, also had a MAPPA meeting with, uh, Eldon, uh, Park County at the engineer's building. We're discussing new bylaws and, uh, another one that's, uh, coming up that, uh, they're wanting to bring in smaller cities with over a population of 2,500 as, uh, memberships and things. And, uh, we're having a little problem with that because that creates a majority rule in Park County. So I don't think that's what we'd be looking for. Uh, I've served on that board since I've been on this board of supervisors and we're still arguing with policy and, uh, technical committee. So, and then also had a meeting with the Lust Hills landfill, uh, CEO and things and we're, you know, having questions about what's going on out there and things. And he says, I realize it's pretty ugly out there right now, but he says, we're in the transition of moving from new, from old to new. And he says, the, the heavy rains and stuff we've had and the flooding that's been on going out there. He says, when you have to dig part of a cell back out because it's got five, six foot of silt in it, he says, you know. But anyway, uh, we're also going to look with MAPPA on a regional resolution. Uh, it's been several years since we've done one. So, uh, we'll be working on that also. That's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you. Jakob Ferrari.
Dushawn is here. Did you bring a printed copy by chance, Dushawn?
No.
Do we have a final draft?
I just had that draft on the, I was sent the other day out. I hope that's the final one.
Okay.
Can we have it ready for next week?
Is it ready and just not printed?
Correct.
Okay. He hasn't sent that to me yet. Um, what would you like to have? Can we print it off now and get it in front of them?
Okay.
We have it.
Yeah.
You said, you know.
Yeah, we have. Yeah, that's what the, the draft is.
Okay.
As long as you're good with it, I'm good with it, Jake. And well, and the county attorney, uh, obviously. Jolene, so visited with her yesterday. She said the payroll thing is straightened out. So I'm okay with it. If you're okay with it. And Dushawn's okay with it.
I, I have no problems, John. I stopped down at the county attorney's office. He says, come here and he'd sit down and we, did you have any questions? Read through it and things, you know, and we got the 30 days in there. I think it's great. The, the price and stuff they got in figured out for cost. So I have no problem with it. I think, I think we've done a pretty good job and it does give them an incentive to keep looking, you know? That's the reason we made it 30 days instead of more because you give them 60, 90 days, uh, they can kind of relax. Well, we'll, we'll think about it. Well, this way they gotta hopefully step up to the plate if they can find someone.
Yeah. Meeting with the attorneys, um, yeah, this is everything. I'm, I'm good with it.
True.
Um, kind of the main things that I wanted to see in here was the 30 days. Um, and then also down at the bottom, we put in there, it's not intended that the engineer will oversee personnel matters during interim period.
True.
Um, I just kind of want to portray the fact and be transparent with them that I'm going to help them stay afloat, uh, keep their projects moving along and things like that. Write signatures where needed, but not necessarily, you know.
Right out of the department.
Yeah.
This.
Take over the whole.
It says draft on it still? Do you want me to take that off? Can I put it on ledger? Do you need it legal?
Uh, are you talking about the link of the paper?
Yes.
Letter's fine.
She loves legal. Put it on ledger.
Stop it.
So, yeah, sorry, I'm okay with this and, um, starting whenever, I guess they enact it, I would be sure if it passed the state.
And they have a copy of this?
I don't, I do. I believe they do not.
Good. Well, we'll, we'll give her sign. We'll send it to them.
Yeah. So if there's any discussion, if you guys have a chance to read through it, any changes you guys would suggest or all of this.
I'm pretty comfortable with it, especially since it's only a month. And I think we can't put it in here because it's only a month long, but I think we should be pretty stern about the fact that if it does get reapproved at some point and they go further, then we up the cost. That way they have an incentive to try to get new engineering. They don't keep Jake.
That's built in.
The accelerating clause isn't built in.
We put it in our actual, um, original agreement. We were going to build in each time there was renewal. We had every 30 days.
Our original agreement?
Yeah.
So I'm a little, I'm a little confused by that.
So we have a draft, we had a draft resolution agreement.
Yes.
And that draft resolution agreement had it built in, doing 2080 agreements. So we know each time it comes before us, we're raising the cost of Jacob to be loaned
Yes.
to Potawatomi County.
Okay. I understand. And I think the, uh, the cost is pretty good. You're getting $70 per hour, Jake, for our work up there in Potawatomi. And then we're getting $200 per hour. So we're getting reimbursed for you focusing on Park County stuff and not on Mills County stuff. And then, uh, Phillips County and Potawatomi County shall mutually agree upon any changes to the scope of work, including adjustments to the engineer's time allocation between the two counties. I think that gives you a little bit of guarantee that they can't just throw something in front of you and ask you to do it themselves.
You, what dates you want to learn for the term today, the month, or just leave it blank for them to fill out?
Well, they'll have to have a meeting to approve it. So I, you'll have to, a little bit from the time that's all signature's perfect.
The way they've been asking about it, I would assume that they will try to do as much as possible.
Today.
Uh, and that's what I want to sign.
They were gonna, on a special meeting yesterday, they handed it up.
And then you have to take and pass it out.
Which one you want to sign? The one that he has or what?
I'm printing a different one.
Good. So we want to make a motion to approve or disapprove?
I would make a motion to approve the 2080 with Potawatomi County for interim engineering services.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the 2080 agreement with Potawatomi County for interim engineering services. Is there any discussion? Hearing then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion and queries.
Sign this one and then I'll send it up.
Nope, sign this one.
Got three copies.
I know. Sorry. I just have the dates in the one. Maybe you want to pass it down?
Well, if you didn't know, Lonnie, the ex-engineer at Park County is now working at Harris.
I did hear that. He was, uh, for him.
I was hoping Park County was going to try and use Harrison's county engineer, but go luck. That would have been funny.
Didn't he retire? Well, it appears he might.
He did, but from what I've heard, it was, uh, early retirement. They have some challenges up there.
Yeah.
Hey, who wants to send?
We'll need to get it out of county.
I can send it to them.
Send it to me as well?
Yep.
And then don't forget that needs to be uploaded to the search here. As soon as we get that back, I don't care if we do it or we do it. But somebody needs to make sure it's uploaded.
I'll send it to John.
Okay. Next time on the agenda, safety coordinator.
Okay, so, um, this is my future request. We have a person in the county that is a safety coordinator. Helps kind of oversee the safety of all of the county as far as.
Overseen the safety of all of the county as far as OSHA requirements, um, putting together. I believe right now it's quarterly safety meetings, um. And so I have someone in my office that would like to take over those responsibilities, um, my office manager. She has been showing that she can do this stuff, she already does OSHA reports for our department. Um, she's been really taking the reins on workman's comp claims, things like that, making sure we're getting everything in order. Um, and so this is something that she would be able to also take on, she has the time for it. And the ability, I think it'll be overall benefit to the whole county, I think we can improve. On our safety meetings and making sure that we have things of the certain requirements such as, um. Fire extinguishers, AEDs, things like that in the building, making sure people are getting. Some department, uh, specific training, um, and then also countywide. Like right now, we have, our department does CPR, um, every two years. We're not required to be certified, uh, just trained, but we do have the certification, a little take that extra step. And so just help facilitating some of those organizing things, getting those meetings together, get people certified or trained. I think it'll be an overall benefit, so. Right now you guys know who's in charge of that, Travis has that, so. He's very busy with EMA stuff, um, I talked with him, he is completely on board. He thinks that if we do transfer this, um, over, his duty is over. He personally feels as well as I do that. There'll be more attention, thanks towards it, and that, that we'll be able to do a better job at fulfilling some of those roles. So in front of you is the job description, that was put together for the safety coordinator, so that this is what you can expect from her to. Be accomplished.
This time we'll go to her and not Travis anymore.
Correct.
Good.
I'd, I'd make a motion to, uh.
And if we could, um, she has already started looking at some of this, ever, she pulled every city counties. Um, safety policy and has already made some tweaks to that, so, um. She has kind of already started assuming some of these roles in the past week or so, so. If you guys do vote to approve that, um, if we can make it an effective date of August eleven. Since she's already started doing it.
I will say this, but I had quite a visit with her here the other day, I had stopped in and. Uh, I talked to her about it because I'd talked to Travis about this, and, you know, we've been looking for some time for somebody to step in and take over. And her comments to me was, Richard, this is what I did at the resource center, I did a lot of this training. And things at the resource center before I came down here, so I mean. I think she has the knowledge and the, and the techniques doing this. Uh, I don't think there'll be, if anything, I believe there'll be improvements. Cause she'll have the time to go ahead and do it, and then I said, you, you have one of the. How do I put it, well, we're accident prone, not down there, but I mean, the work you do with things. Environment really, you know, yeah, we have conservation are different ones, but working with equipment and stuff and. Things around, so, no, I would make a motion that we approve her as safety coordinator.
And the job description, you go along with it?
Yep.
It's, we just never had one. There's never, never, that's never been around what we were gonna do.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Thank you.
Amber, were we got planning on getting the safety coordinator position with the facilities manager, that's the only question I have.
It would be separate because of the stipends, so it was gonna be, there'll be parts of it that will, they'll have to work together on. But that person would be more around facility management, and then they would coordinate together on some of the safety aspects, but. Some of, I might pull some of those back and add some other duties, but I'm, I've got to work on that still.
My only question would be backdating this, has Mr., uh, Herges, has, has Travis been paid for any of this on the backdating?
Already.
The reason I said August end is speaking of things because it is a separate thing.
Okay.
So that was the only reason.
Okay, then that was my question, I, I don't want us refunding it.
No.
Few dollars.
Easier for her because then it is not.
Good.
Doing any of that, it's just completely shifting links basically in the system.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. General discussion?
General discussion, uh, I will be attending ISAC this week, so I'll be there Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, council blow's agreement up for the annexation, we have the draft back from them. We, um, have reviewed it, we're in agreement with it, so I'll be bringing that forward, comparing to you guys next week. First, uh, signing and then they can sign it, I think what we're going to do is do our own resolution. With that agreement attached and they'll do their own resolution with that, so. Overall, it'll be a three-page document. Also, uh, we're in progress with building applications, uh, open for better positions, and, um. Seasonal mower, we got one application that was blank, so. We're looking back at.
That might fall out of its lane.
Yeah.
Do that.
Sometimes that happens, it's like, okay, they hit submit tube soon and then it'll come through, but it's just.
That's weird.
So we're looking back through all the ones we got before, um, I know it was a while ago. And kind of maybe reach out to some of them, see if they're interested or whatnot.
Good.
Um, but we do have some applicants for the truck driver that look promising, so I'm gonna be calling, we skipped on interviews for the next week, but I'll get back to myself. Hopefully get that filled here before the snow flies.
Good.
Thank you, sir, I think the greater guys did a great job with the condition of the roads we had, with places, it's unbelievable gullies and.
Carry cables out in the middle of the road where you're?
We didn't, uh, plus a picture of one that was exposed.
You're exposed, but.
I believe it was an abandoned one, because it was only, uh, six inches below.
Okay.
Any communication lines, anything of that nature, meant almost thirty inches deep. Now, we do have an exposed one out on Ingram, uh, there was a slough off, so we're looking at that, um. If they contacted and we're gonna get that, so then we'll go back.
Good. Good. Thank you, sir.
Yep, uh, I'm gonna stick around to the next one, since I've been carrying contract for a bit about that.
Okay.
I got two things for you, Joe.
Just not yet, sorry.
Um, number one, I got a phone call from Terry and Aaron Borthman. Uh, age twelve, fifteen, three hundred thirtieth and three hundred and seventieth. It depends on where you are in the road, I mean, it goes from twenty-four feet down to nineteen feet. Gravel road, now that it's gravel for a year, and on top of that, it's been built up. About a foot, but and a half in certain spots, and they got a lot of. Agriculture or equipment that goes on that roadway, a lot of hired help, and I know it's temporary, that roadway before it gets turned into seal coat again, but. Is there anything that we can do to try to make the road a little bit more safer, because they, they got quite a, quite a big concern.
I'll go take a look at it, um, I have a, a note at my desk to give them a call back today, because I know it's called in. Now, the seal coat road, uh, was twenty-two foot wide, so. If, if it's twenty-four foot now, that is two foot wider than it was before, but I'll go take a look at it and see if we can even. Brushing stuff up or whatever.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And then Dustin Carlson reached out to me, he lives north of the. Landfill in the subdivision there, he said that there was a, oh, if you know any of this, correct, there was an accident there yesterday?
Yeah, we was talking about that. Yeah, it was a street sweeper, yeah, rear end of a semi, pretty secretly, we kind of took him out. Semi doing.
Seventy?
Fifty-five.
Yeah.
Um, and, yeah, semi running back, so. Preliminary, it sounds like perhaps the, the landfill was supposed to have a pilot car out there behind it.
Right.
Does it have a slow-mo vehicle sign on it?
It was from. I don't know. I, I didn't, I wasn't out there, it happened. Right at three o'clock, busy as time of the day out there on that highway. So, we, we've had, had a little bit of conversation with the company about, about, that's how we found out, it's supposed to be a pilot car, well. Uh, and then also the question of timing, that they could, they could be out there sweeping that street at five o'clock in the morning, with, with the lights would make a difference and. And at three o'clock, you have to, and pilot cars is a question. We don't know if there, if there was one, you just left or there wasn't one, we don't have an answer.
But my conversation with landfill last week and stuff, they have. Hired that to an outside source and they're not supposed to sweep until after five o'clock in the afternoon or early morning hours.
Yeah, get on their contractors, yeah.
Evidently somebody's time clock is off or something, because.
Yeah.
At three o'clock on thirty-four.
Three, three.
I don't, I don't even try and. Go down the street.
No.
Point being, Jake, as you know, there, there's been a lot of accidents there, and Dustin reached out to me back when I worked in the legislature. Trying to make sure that the DOT was aware, as I'm sure they are, but I was wondering if you could just put in a phone call to somebody at the DOT. And explain how hazardous that is, because you know, they put in a huge turning lane there to get to Silver City, but there's not one there for that subdivision. And for me, you know, I drive on that stretch of road every day, it, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense, it's pretty dangerous for those people that live there.
So you're saying a turn lane for the subdivision?
Turning lane, yeah, that's, that's what they'd like, and they would like to get a turning lane for the subdivision there.
That would be put in the middle of the highway then?
Oh, put on the side.
Widen it one way or another.
Well, there are wide, some like east, so in point where you get a turn lane is from east.
Yeah, you're talking about.
At least.
Yeah, yeah, that's the majority of people's concerns, but trying to just get at least something from some way. Where they can get in there safely without, you know, having a semi truck coming up right behind them from the landfill, and then having to slow all the way down the ditch to their, to their homes.
Yeah. I, I mean, I can put in a concern to some of the contacts there, but. I mean, obviously, you know, people have loaded.
Yes.
And, and sure, there's a cut off.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Sure.
Alrighty, thank you.
Julie, are you there?
Yeah, so here.
So this is Julie for the next portion. And Julie, do you want to explain a little bit about your race?
Yeah, um, my name is Julie Moore, I'm the race director for Superbowl gravel, which is a women's gravel race that's. We had last year in Lenwood and we're having again this year, uh, but, uh. Yeah, we have, uh, a hundred riders and they're coming in twelve different scenes. So it'll be a really nice opportunity, but a lot of them will be riding these roads for the first time, uh, many, we have, many that are repeating and they're coming back again, so. Uh, it's very, very unique then because so many things in the US, the first one was in, uh. Montana, uh, but yeah, uh, very good opportunity for tourism, I mean. Then also give people out enjoying. Mills County area recreating, um, so I'm hopefully trying to cover all my bases, I've been talking to everybody. Uh, from, uh, Glenmore Park, so, uh. Fire departments, police departments, et cetera, so I think I have a nice list of about. Uh, twenty people that I've reached out to and have gotten approval for, um, and then the last step was, uh, to, to speak with you all, see if. There was any issues or any suggestions, uh, but yeah, the, the race is on, is on September sixth, which is coming up here soon.
Bicycles?
Oh, yes, yeah.
This, this is.
And I sent it.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, this is strictly on gravel roads then?
Correct, it has, it utilizes a couple of maybe like paid connectors to connect to the gravel roads, but it should be, I think it's like. Five percent gravel.
Julie, I think I emailed you, um, I'm a county engineer talking, so I know it goes on Kid Road a little bit, so that was one of my concerns, um. It does help that we did just a little speed limit there, so that'll help, but. Just for the bicycles to be careful on that paved route, people don't abide by that new speed limit necessarily, so. Coming over those, those hills and those lines and turns, um. Could be a safety hazard right there especially.
Yeah, we, and we, we always tell them too, like, you're riding on open roads, you're in traffic, so you have to follow all traffic laws, obviously. Right on the right side of the road, et cetera, and I believe, I think that stretch that they're gonna be on, it might be for like a half a mile maybe.
Yeah, that's not very.
Um, so, but I will actually, we, when we do the pre-race meeting too, and also on the maps, like they have GPS, or they'll tell them like, uh. Busy road, et cetera, and we'll make sure to call those out during the race, like, hey, there's some sections that you might, you need to be extra careful, and we tell them that on gravel roads too, where like, you know. You have to make yourself predictable, people are expecting cars to be on the right side, like, don't drive on the center line, don't, uh, you know, like, always only overtake if you have a clear line of sight, so. I don't wanna generalize, but, uh, where, where we're a women's gravel race, they're all, uh, extra safety conscious, I suppose, so I, I think that's, that's a good thing.
Would you agree with it?
I think this is our own internal, it's a good example of drafting up that ordinance of having an events permit, um. Establish the set of king deal with all the departments and.
U2 com center. Rescue.
Yeah, there was some conversations, go back, what the, between emails and. It was on an unrelated race and we realized the business was occurring, um, so it, it, we definitely had to spur something up, um, but.
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't put it as an action, I'm just glad we skipped on it, so, maybe take action on it, so. Julie, thank you so much for the time.
Of course, yeah, and if you guys have any questions, yeah, feel free to email me, um, I think I have approval from most everybody, actually, everybody that I think I need approval from, I. I, if there's anybody that has any information that maybe it would be pertinent for me to know, feel free to send that my way.
Okay.
Uh, ju- just make sure you stay in touch with the sheriff, uh, secondary roads and fire and rescue, that's, that would be my biggest concern, is public safety.
That's one thing too, I spoke to Jacob, uh, Sero.
Yeah.
On the thirty-first of July, and I think he was just gonna double check a couple things, so I'm gonna follow back up with him, um, just to make sure. There's no on-road closures, I know that like some of the. Uh, minimum maintenance roads or, uh, class B roads are really run it out right now, so that's one area we're getting told. Writers to be extra cautious, uh, I know those sometimes get created, but I don't know when that happens, but, um, yeah, we always put signs up too there, it says to. To just be extra cautious because it's dangerous area.
Sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna take a hard time.
Oh.
Yeah, no, Julie, I, I spoke with the foreman and made him aware of the route right away, um. And we've had some other issues, so we haven't. You know, addressed just specifically the entire route, but if he's aware of it, I'll let you know as it gets closer to make sure that we don't have any. Fresh rock or anything like that, or any hazards that he should be aware of.
Yeah, that would be awesome, because I think that's kind of like one of the trickiest things is, uh. If there is like fresh rock that's getting cleaned down, uh, if there's any way to like hold off until after the race, and if it's not possible, it's totally fine, we'll take the race. And we can at least notify the racers, like, hey. That stuff is really hard, uh, to ride over, so we look through the next, you know, like, there's fresh rock in certain roads, so. It's extra caution, because sometimes you, it's to those areas kind of like unexpectedly, and that way they know that.
Yeah, yeah, he. He was looking through his project list, and if there was any on that route, who's gonna push him back to after the race, do not have fresh rock down, but. You know, sometimes we, we still, we just have to, so.
Yeah.
If the road gets really bad, but we'll let you know.
That sounds great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, bye.
Thanks, Jake. Can we go to dinner or something some night up there, you, you, are you taking the family or not?
No, they're staying back, so.
Well, you got my number.
Alright, sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Schultz, you.
May, yeah, I, not, just for a little bit, I have to leave at nine fifteen. Requesting you guys moving up on the agenda so I can get through my portions, so I can.
I guess.
I know, I'm sorry. Just letting sure that I can talk about my things and then.
Uh, first item I have is twenty twenty-four TIF valuation submission.
So this, um, I was working, every year we have to do a GAFB seven letter that. We send out to the tax entities, let them know how much money was diverted from their tax base for TIF. Um, when the evaluations are filed, let's say in January of the previous year. Um, those TIF evaluations should be removed from. The overall valuation for the city, county and all the tax entities to base their tax plan on. Well. Previous administration for a reason didn't remove those, um, and so they're included in the valuation amounts that everybody based their tax asking on. Um, which is about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars of TIF money that was diverted away from several taxing entities in error, um. So. I realized this as I was working on the GAFB seventy-seven letter, because it wouldn't let me add those values in, so I could show those. Entities what they, you know, what went to TIF, I reached out to the department of management and they just. Said, well, here's what was turned in, and those two areas were missing. Um, so I went in, because then I started to worry, I went in and. For the current year, when now, those evaluations were submitted correctly when I did them in January, so this is a one-time deal. Um, it's something I'm trying to work through. Um, so in your packet, there's just a breakdown of each, each levying authority and how much. Um, tax money they did not receive, it's an estimated amount. Um, but I guess. This is, this is, it wasn't, this was a result of an oversight from the previous auditor and in the interest of protecting taxpayers from further losses, reimbursements cannot be given. Because the county is also part of that. Um, and I estimate we lost three hundred and forty seven thousand dollars revenue.
We, the county.
We as the county, the school was around four hundred thousand. Um, and then the other entities kind of fall in line. Um, if. You know, the county's already less money as well. Everybody's gonna be less a little bit of tax money. And I don't think there's a way to, to fix it without undue burden on the taxpayers.
Did that money go towards TIF debt then?
We have.
In the end, it'll be paid off quicker.
Well, yeah, our development agreement will get it off. Yeah, so in the one of the areas that was not included or was removed from the. That was included in the valuation that should have been, is the one area that we're gonna pay that. Um, bond off early for, and so those monies will stop being collected sometime in October or November hopefully. And then those money will then be released back. So that should help. It's not a perfect solution, uh, solution, but it is a.
Sure.
I'm just bringing it to your guys' attention so that you're aware, because you're gonna get asked about it. Um, I have sent letters out to each tax entity with an estimate of how much.
Thank you. Approval of purchase of tablet.
I am requesting approval to purchase a Remarkable tablet, um, in the interest of becoming paperless. I find myself printing off a lot of stuff. Um, so I was thinking a tablet, like a remarkable one is like paper, you can download the documents to it, make your notes on it, save it. And that way I'm not craning out a hundred pieces of paper, just flip through it on my tablet. Um, my hope is that if it is, if that does work, then my office will start to get those and then we'll start to reduce our paper overall.
I mentioned to who?
If, uh, this will be to Remarkable, the company, I have to buy it online. Now I'm out of order, so I gotta find it real quick. Uh, the total price is, um, seven seventy nine. And that is the tablet and also a, a portfolio to protect it.
Seven seventy nine five?
Yep, and it is in my budget purchase.
Make a motion to approve purchase of a tablet through Remarkable for seven seventy nine.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve the purchase of the tablet through Remarkable for seven seventy nine. Even if there's any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Consideration formal acts from resolution twenty five dash twenty two, designating voting, designating voting representative for the Iowa State Association of Counties.
The only one that I don't have anybody in is for this county zoning officials of Iowa. Um, so I don't know. I, I did send this to you guys last weekend. I don't know if you guys had a chance to get, to look at it, um. So I don't have weekends of it. If you guys want to add somebody or remove, I just, I don't have anything to sign right now. Or you guys, this doesn't need to be done till September, so you guys can think about it and I can have it at the next meeting too.
I would be more than glad to sit to handle that. Cause I'd be more than glad to do that.
Do that. Do you want to official one?
For now.
Have you doing?
Until we, yeah, until we, uh, some full time.
We have to move it full time. We don't even have the application.
So it'd be until then.
I'll make a motion, approve resolution twenty five dash twenty two, designated voting representatives for the Iowa State Association of Counties. With a amendment that Lonnie Mayberry is our voting delegate to the county zoning officials of Iowa.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve resolution twenty five twenty two, designating voting representative for the Iowa State Association of Counties. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain. Been a few more meetings in the morning.
And then, um. We are maybe conducting a second interviews, um, next week. I've had some really good candidates for both of them, so second interview will be next week and hopefully have somebody to you guys week after. Uh, both, the accountable admin assistant and then the facilities, safety coordinator.
Oh, yeah, I forgot that, okay.
And I will also be attending Isaac. I'm leaving this afternoon. Um.
Thank you.
Good.
We'll come back, Sheriff.
Next thing on the agenda is retirement.
I, I know. Taking worth for.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, in your packet, you get everything. But resignation and authorizing, go ahead and look forward with the hiring process.
Issue left already?
Uh, no, her official I think.
I would make a motion to accept the resignation and with the Sheriff's approval to hire the vacant position.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve the resignation and approval to hire for a vacant position. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Also.
Got your letter the other day on opioid, that was.
Yeah, um, that's, that's a request that I sent to Amber. Put on the agenda. Uh, some of the items we're looking at, we got a couple of big events coming up here soon, Malvern. Uh, we'll have trunk or treat. Uh, we ended up, uh, just on an oversight, um. Some lack of communication. Uh, we didn't really, we weren't very, very well prepared for our community event that we saw out here in the square. We didn't have, didn't hand up. Um, so we, we'd like to get ahead of this a little bit, uh, when we have, have this trunk or treat event. Uh, just some of the items that we'd be thinking about handing out and what we would be doing is just to make sure that we, we tie all this to. Say no drugs, uh, the opioid fund purposes for education. Uh, just as a preference, it could be the wristbands, which I have my own saying. A bit of the, the Mills County Sheriff's Office logo on one side and then the Be Smart Say No Drug Alcohol on the other. Uh, it's, they have a couple of different colors. Um, and these little frisbee things, we got some coloring books for the younger kids and we got. And sort of some stuff, just some stuff that we could hand out, uh, that, that hadn't kept the sheriff's office. Saying no, no drugs.
It still fits under the.
Education materials, um, and, uh. Yeah, um, in, in our budget this year, uh, as the opioid funds.
I, I just had put fifty thousand.
Yeah, um, we don't, we don't intend to spend that. Uh, we were hoping, hoping just for a thousand dollars out of that opioid fund settlement. Um, that'll, that should be able to get us, you know, a, a pretty good amount of stuff to handle, at least likely set to the term, for her trunk or treat. Truck or treat. Sparkle, yeah, that's that kind of stuff. So, uh, just so that we have some stuff to hand out, uh, during those events, so.
Did we do, Amber, up to a thousand since we don't have a set price?
Yeah, I didn't want to, I didn't want to get any crazy prices because I didn't know. I, I, we have an act, yeah, but we'll go up to a thousand, we'll say.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to provide up to one thousand dollars to the Mills County Sheriff's Office of Opioid Fund. Mills County Sheriff's Office swag and everything tied back to opioid use prevention.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that. I guess my question is, you're gonna go ahead and. You know, like order this stuff and then give us a bill that we, she will pay out. She will, I mean, we'll have a money trail when I'm looking at.
Yes.
Okay, because that was one thing, the lady's improvised to me, she says, keep a money trail for me.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, this, this will be part of my trail, but you guys approved it and it'll purchase a little bit of a traditional, it'll be all in my still though, I'll put it in my opioids.
I don't know, we're tax exempt.
I'll have to report on that, uh, in April, I think, so I'll, I keep all that stuff in an opioid holder.
Good job. Okay, we got a motion as second to approve up to one thousand dollars for opioid funds to the sheriff. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You'd be surprised at the counties that have contacted me and, you know, how did, what, when you spending your money? Most of everything and anything.
Whatever you have that.
Yeah.
I, I just followed up, sign up for opioid funds. Um, I followed up with an email to the sheriff app yesterday. It's been almost two months since I put out that, hey, it's coming, the sheriff's app. You can download sheriff's app right now. I've got it on my phone. Uh, they do a great job of letting me know every time. There's a little bit of a change in the thunderstorm activity.
My wife will be elated.
Um, but it's not, it's not, we've asked for several things to include, um, I, I mentioned them in the sheriff app. You go to this, it's more about, uh, opioid addiction, opioid addiction resources. Uh, you know, flying Narcan nearby. They talked to the state director of the hospital and. Uh, the men, mental health resources. There's a lot of them that are, yeah, yes, sir, that's it, yep. Um, there's a lot of them that are nationwide and also statewide, um, but we, we asked them to have more vocalized. Uh, some that are in the, uh, Mills County, Fox County, Douglas County, Omaha Metro, Conspor area, and they haven't added it. We've got a little bit of disappointment with their response on that. Um, but, uh, hopefully that reminder email will kind of get rolling. But then you have a lot of good resources on there. They have, I can not be, we talked about, that's a help, and I mean Iowa. Uh, the National Healthline, the children and families of Iowa, that, you know, I don't know if they're just based in Des Moines, it's a five on five number. When I got together with, uh, public health, they gave me about three pages worth of contacts. And usually they're available to help over here and I haven't seen those added in. I'd like to see what that had in. Uh, we also asked for, uh, just a couple of smaller changes, the pictures in there are dated. Um, so we're working towards that. You can, as I mentioned though, uh, you can sign up for, for. Notifications, uh, we're not doing the push notifications right now, uh, really because. Kind of waiting for the thing to get done. We haven't asked anybody to go out there and download it. We just said, hey, it's coming. Several people have, uh, but you can go. Just as a preference, uh, that's our current request.
Like a picture too.
I enjoy it.
Yeah, you, you can, yeah, you can keep, keep yourself up to date and, uh, the bottom seven are all great. Um, just kidding, uh, I shouldn't say. Uh, but you can, you can go through, you can keep up to date daily on, we've been added, we've been let go. Um, it's a very handy thing. The warrant list is included with that, so you can go to the warrant list. Uh, just last week I had a guy send me a text and said, hey, my name's on the list, what did I do? Uh, so we were able to work that out. These will come into court, get things handled right away, keep stuff clean, mind and stuff out and. Uh, you know, we got some responsible people out there that just done some silly thing, they're gonna come take care of themselves and then, and that's what that whole, the whole purpose was, so.
Good.
Uh, it's worked out well. Hopefully we'll get that all, all completed. Uh, I was gonna mention just really quick about that, the street sweeper crash. Um, we, we're still in the process of doing some investigation on that. Um, if there's a, that's a contract issue between those hills and the company out of Gretna. Those are the streets we think, and a bit of them. I know they did tremendous amount of damage to that street sweeper, so it's gonna be laid up for a while and not sold. Um, we do have a vehicle auction coming up. We got two of our C vehicles, three C's. Those C trailer that are gonna come up, uh, got those pulled out yesterday, that'll be coming up here shortly. Uh, that was something that we tried to get on to, uh, on the, on the news auction that went on. Maybe we just couldn't get it all together fast enough, so we're just gonna do a still bit.
Sure.
Um. And then, uh, Friday, I'll be attending, get the first reservation from the Allen office. We'd be, I'll come in in the morning, work about half a day and then take out about ten, uh, to make my way down to the line of reservation, but. Excited, excited to have her out and get her in field training.
What time in Des Moines, in Des Moines?
Two o'clock, Friday afternoon.
I mean, as we said, you know, some of us say that we're in Nebraska anyway, but, uh, this opioid stuff, I said, well, you know, there's. Some cases or some is where maybe our help has to come from across the river. And I go, well, I said, well, there's nothing we can do about it. So hopefully the legislators and stuff will open their eyes up to where, you know, it, it. The line doesn't stop the drug problem, you know, and that's hard to convey to some people because. When you have two or three representatives along this river over here, the rest of the state can go, so what?
So what? The, the good news is the east side has the same problem.
Yep.
Um, that entire Mississippi report or they've got the exact same problems we do on Missouri side. Um, I know, uh, several years back, I don't know, since then, probably thirteen years ago, a year ago. We had the same problem with somebody who lived in the state of Nebraska, who had been coming up, served by Iowa law. State of Iowa said, no, you have to, right, because I didn't, I didn't say, well, that took out a tremendous amount of people for us, because a lot of people wanted to stay living in Nebraska. Um, they have now changed it. You can, as I said, Nebraska drivers less than live in Nebraska and so do the Iowa law. With, with a little time, little patience, they'll, they'll come on, so.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, weird. Amy, that's a lot. Any, any, any question?
No, no, no. No, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. They have a sideways Z on their football helmet. I mean, why would you? I don't get it. Alright, Lori, you're up.
That's funny.
Now you're here. You fled, smart. What can we do for you?
I'm here to give that with the cost of my painting. I have, like, it's a hundred thirty two dollars and ninety cents total, and I have a quote from Carter Hank, or the treasured stand. Just the Amazon, I mean, the method for it all. And I showed Amber what the sand was, she's fine with it.
And you're doing it yourself?
Yeah, I could bet on it. Zero labor cost. Probably on weekends. I don't, I'm not sure when I'll get to it, but.
True. Then we'll pay it in here. It was done with in-house labor. Downstairs, it was spanning down in-house labor, so.
Almost sounds impossible. So I have, I'll make a motion to approve the painting and wallpapering for a hundred and thirty two ninety.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the painting and wallpapering in the recorder's office for one thirty two ninety? No more, right?
It might be less if I can get in there, buy the paint, because it might be cheaper.
Alright, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
I will keep it here.
Alright.
Well, even I can't.
That's tough to, yeah, that's tough to argue. I mean, a lot of pain for a hundred thirty dollars.
Yeah, have you ever hung wallpaper?
My dad gave me three pieces of advice. One was never wallpaper with your spouse, so that.
You're correct. I used to do it with my mother, but my wife asked me to wallpaper the bedroom, I says, hire it. I don't care what it costs, we're not getting into this.
Yeah, yeah, I, he had three, that's one of them.
Why, why can't I rebuild an entire pond in our backyard this weekend? Neither one of us had to contact the Sean, so. It was good, it was good.
I cannot tell whether or not your wife did.
Uh, anything for the betterment of the.
The only thing I have is, uh, for, for next week. Following our board meeting at ten thirty, we'll be having our flood, flood meeting with, uh, Terry Brown from FEMA. Hook Cole from, uh, Atlantic that was our cog and anybody else that I can. Try to bring into this conversation to see where.
We need to put that to bed.
Well, if we don't want to, uh, Terry even mentioned the other day, if something would happen down here, say tornado, uh, you know, any kind of. Catastrophe or something, and if we called FEMA, you know, like the other day when we had seven inches of rain, we're lucky we didn't lose any roads and things. Uh, beans, we have this outstanding bill. They could say, well, not till you get this taken care of, you know, you don't qualify, so. Yeah, I, I can't figure out why they haven't pushed it. Themselves, it doesn't make sense to me, so.
Will that be here in the boardroom?
Yep.
Your director?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, a- anybody that's, you know, uh. But just Lonnie and I are the only ones that are still around for the flooding issue, I don't know who else. You wanna bring in somebody or think of somebody, you know?
We just need to put it to bed, we need to find out what, what we need to do or what they need to do and move on. Get too many people that want, that wanna.
Yeah.
Rent by.
Well.
Use those.
Yep.
Appropriations, so, put them back to use. Okay, someone wanna make a motion adjourn?
Well, actually, real quick, Amber wanted me to remind you all that the super board meeting is next Thursday, and any agenda items need to be to her by Friday at noon. She just said, she just said next Thursday, so.
Twenty eighth, then?
Yes.
Not this week, no?
How is this week?
So did I. Oh, you're gonna be on.
I'm sorry, it's Thursday this week, I need them today by noon, I'm so sorry.
They're in your name, you guys will both be at ICAC, is there anything you want me to cover?
I can't think of anything right now, sure, but you all said you touched or something.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, and I apologize, the only thing I gotta say is I make a correction, I was wrong with what I said. Last week, if the landco meeting was that night, is tonight at six thirty for the zoning board adjustment, so I do apologize for that. And it was corrected in minutes.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine seventeen.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn at nine seventeen, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.
Hey, great, I'll be down for the colored book.
Thanks, John.
What's it on?